All right, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'd like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on television on Comcast Channel 99 and rebroadcast on WMGJ radio. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Tows.
Here.
Councilman Williams.
Here.
Worthy.
Here.
Eccles.
Here.
Billingsley.
Here.
Cannon.
Here.
And Reed.
Here.
We have a forum president, our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Brian Harbison to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing with the pledge of allegiance.
We pray with me, Almighty God, we just thank you for today. We thank you for the blessings of life. God, we thank you for the recent celebration of our nation's birthday. We just pray to continue to keep your hand on our national leaders. God, we pray for wisdom today for our local council as they take care of very important business that involves the city and their constituents. God, we thank you for the mayor and his style. We pray to continue to bless him with the wisdom he needs. We just pray, God, that you would just bless this meeting, help us to keep our focus on you and everything you've done for us. We'll give you the praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do want to thank everyone for their patience. We were a little bit longer upstairs. There's been, obviously, we had the week-long layoff and had a lot of ground to cover upstairs, so we appreciate everyone being patient with us as we work through that. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Community Development Committee work session and city council meeting held on June 27.
Shall move. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the weeks of June 16th through the 22nd and the 23rd through the 29th.
Shall move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamations, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. Unfinished business. Item number 8A is an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance regarding first-floor residential access. This ordinance was presented last week for first reading. It would require multifamily residential units in commercial districts to have a common foyer, which would relieve privacy and safety concerns by avoiding access directly onto a sidewalk or public right-of-way. What is the pleasure of the council?
Let's adopt.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 305 South 14th Street in District 3. The state of Alabama and those certain rights of redemption of all parties as identified in the estate of Tommy Graves Jr. being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison of the Building Department. We started this case in January of this year. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking for a resolution today to abate this decision.
Couldn't miss out on that dog, could you? Come on.
What is the pleasure of the council? Move to abate.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1327 Alabama Street in District 3. Damien Properties LLC being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, this case involves a partially burned structure on Alabama Street. We started the process in December of 2016. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking for a resolution today to abate this decision.
Okay. What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
There you go.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1420 Kyle Avenue in District 3. Van D Stevens being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in December of 2016. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this decision.
Move to abate.
There you go.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
No council action will be necessary regarding property at 305 North 29th Street in District 6 because the nuisance has been abated by the owners. Our next public hearing?
29th Street.
Okay. Okay, no action is necessary on that one because that's apparently been abated by the owner. So that's apparently, the nuisance has been abated by the owner, so no action is necessary or required on that one.
We're not doing anything on it.
Yeah.
No.
All right. All right, item number, our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1305 Ellis Avenue in District 6. Certain rights and redemption of Christina M. Ramirez, state of Alabama. Charles Narmore being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, this case involves a partially demolished mobile home. We started the process in December of 2016. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking for a resolution to abate this decision.
Brian, we have to take a torch and cut that frame apart. Is that what we're gonna have to do on that one too? I could probably load that up, trailer.
Sorry.
We're gonna have to take a torch and cut that frame in too, so we're gonna have to do on that trailer to haul it off.
Public works has experience in these mobile homes, they'll do business.
Okay. What is the pleasure of the council?
Uh, move to adopt. Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 2305 Nakalula Road in District 7. Eric V. Hamm and wife Judy M. Hamm being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Mr. President, this property is in the process of being sold. I was told the new owner was gonna be here today. I see no one moving forward, so after conversing with the city attorney, I would like to ask that this case be tabled for 30 days and give us an opportunity. We have issued an demolition permit to the new owner, but this 30-day period will give us an opportunity to see how that plays out, and then I will report to the council in 30 days and let them know what we've done. We may have to go through the process, notify the new owner. They are aware that the property is condemned, like I said, their desire now is to remove the house, and we're certainly in favor of that, so we'll just ask that it be tabled for 30 days. Thank you.
Okay. What is the pleasure of the council?
I think we should have a report back in 30 days, but I'm gonna ask for it indefinitely tabled.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution indefinitely, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for an indefinite period.
Item number 15 is a resolution awarding bid number 3346 for the East Gadsden area community storm shelter project. The city engineer has recommended awarding the bid to Harbor Enterprises LLC, and the amount is $106,546.75. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 16 is a resolution awarding bid number 3347 for the West Gadsden area community storm shelter project. The city engineer has recommended awarding the bid to Harbor Enterprises LLC, and the amount is $106,546.75. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 17 is a resolution amending rental rates for various facilities of the Parks and Recreation Department. This adds to the list of rentals, to the rentals of certain facilities and combination packages, including 5th Street Market, multiple day rate for 210 at the tracks, combination pass for Nakalula Falls, Downtown Civic Center, Pittman Theater Combo, and the Water Wall. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Shall move.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 18 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Lamar Advertising. This is for two billboards advertising Nakalula Falls Park on I-59, and the amount is $5,625 from July 12th through October 3rd of 2017. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Shall move.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, I wish we talked upstairs. I wish there was some way we could track this to see how much revenue this is bringing in for us, but I don't think we've got a way to do that. So, it's a good, it's a good deal, though, where we can, people come down the highway both ways to know about Nakalula Falls and all that, so it's a really good idea we do this, but I just need to try to figure out how much revenue we're gonna generate from it, if you know.
Yeah, I've been trying to get that done ever since I've been in office, but, you know, I think with all the traffic that goes down I-59, it'll definitely bring more income in.
The state of Alabama had some system where they did surveys and all this, and they know pretty close to how many people observe that sign and turn and go in different places. We might have checked that out there.
Okay. All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 19 is a resolution authorizing supplemental agreement number 2 with Aldat. This is for preliminary engineering for the widening and resurfacing of South 11th Street from Black Creek Parkway to near Piedmont Avenue, and the amount is $156,000. This is an 80/20 cost share with federal funds, and the city's portion is $31,200. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Shall move.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Heath, do we know which side of the road they're gonna go on? Are they gonna go both sides to widen, or which way would the, which way would it go?
The primary side of widening will be on the south side, along the school side. This was accounted for in the school construction, so everything was built back at that time appropriately to accommodate this widening. There may be some minor spots where you'll notice it on-site, but primarily the main widening will be on the south side.
Thank you. Thank you for the school.
All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business, is there any new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have three items, and I'd like to start and ask for unanimous consent, and this is a request from the Community Development, and it's a grant that's applying for an application and from a DECA.
Second.
All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move for adoption.
Second.
Okay. Is there any additional discussion?
This grant will benefit the 13th Place, the Love Center, the homeless, the Love Center Homeless Shelter, and this is funds that are greatly needed, and the amount of the grant that they are applying for is $66,666.66.
That's for each one of them.
And that's for each one, which is great.
Salvation Army.
Salvation Army. 13th Place, the Love Center, and the Salvation Army. This is the grant that if the money is awarded, they would get this amount. Each agency would get this amount of money.
Okay. I don't know if it was, I don't know if it was just a clerical error, Renee, but the 13th Place's letter depicts a different amount.
She was a little less than, she said it.
Okay, all right.
I don't, I mean, as long as it's noted somewhere, I've mentioned it in the minutes, so as long as it's noted somewhere, I think we're fine.
All right, is there any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
I have another item. One is from Chris from the mayor's office, and the other one is from the Engineering Department, which has to do with the renovate, not the renovation, but the, has to do with the expenditures for the new development that's going on at the K-Mark building. One has to do with the expenditures, it's TIF funds, and the other one has to do with the, for the kitchen plan and services to be added at the K-Mark property. So I ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance and the resolution under new business today, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent for consideration of both items.
I move for adoption.
Second.
Okay, is there any additional discussion?
Shane will come and explain. We'll explain it better.
Thank you so much for the opportunity. We do have two items you're voting on today. One is a budget amendment. When we originally, when this body originally approved the contract with Cohen, Cornesio, and Reynolds for architectural services on the former K-Mark building, we said that we would fund it with tax increment financing monies, and we are, but in the interim, we've been using excess funds from the Riverwalk development, actually from the construction contract with Bob Smith Construction. I think we came in, I want to say around $90,000, $100,000 under our contract amount across the way. That was even after adding, if you haven't noticed, there's new lighting on the board wall and the two new boat docks south of the, of the board wall, so there's new lighting there as well, and that was an additional cost that we had not anticipated, but we still came in significantly under and had money to pay the architect for, I guess, four months, and so now those funds have been all depleted, and we need to do what we said we'd do initially, which was take the TIF money and apply it for their contract. The other, that was the ordinance. The resolution is supplemental agreement. The, we all think of a kitchen as being pretty simple, but if you're trying to serve 1,500 people a plated dinner simultaneously in three different ballrooms, it gets kind of complicated, and so therefore there's the agreement there for additional kitchen consulting services that would be run through the architect. So that's, I think it's $47.50, something like that, to get all that handled. We'll take the existing equipment from Convention Hall, but then we may have to add to, so it's probably more than you wanted to know, but that's the ordinance and the resolution.
How about, how about telling the public what tax increment financing is, I'm sure.
I thought you were gonna do it, but I'll be glad to. There was, gosh, 12 years ago, something like that, there was a TIF district set up. There's actually two TIF districts, but we'll get into that. It established a boundary around certain properties, and it goes all the way from Alabama City to Tuscaloosa Avenue to downtown Gadsden, over into East Gadsden, if I'm not mistaken. And it actually, the county agreed at that time to freeze the tax valuation of the, all the properties within that boundary, and the goal was any incremental increase in the tax amount on that property would go into this special fund, the TIF fund, and those monies would be put back into the TIF district so that it just continues to feed itself and to fund new development, redevelopment. We've used it for infrastructure. We used it to complete, we have an energy grant for the Pittman Ritz Theaters. We use this money to finish those up. We use some of it for the new Riverwalk across the way. It's been a great source for us. You can use it to fund a bond issue, which we've not done yet, but it's, can be done. It all goes back into this TIF district in order to improve the property there and to spur redevelopment.
Probably the biggest one we had was Walmart. All that property over there, when it was torn down, say there was like $1,300 in taxes, and now with all that that's in there, the difference between that amount that it was and what it is today goes into this tax increment financing. To go back into that same district for infrastructure or whatever, it was a great thing for us.
Another good example's the Rivertrace development there, even though you've seen some closures, still the property was taxed, I don't know what the rate was when it was a golf course, but now this commercial development, it'd be significantly higher, so that increment, that change goes back to the law.
Yeah. All right, and of course, you mentioned earlier saying that there's, that we're just now tapping TIF funds due to the fact that we were under budget with the original project, so.
Yeah, we were fortunate in that we only had one bidder. Usually that's not necessarily a good thing, but Bob Smith Construction was, was the only bidder so we could negotiate pricing with them, and they were extremely good to work with, and where they could do something at the same quality but for a cheaper price, they did, and so we were able to save a good bit of, good bit of money. Like I said, we've been paying the architect for four months and not had to do this, so.
Well, I ask you to repeat that because that's not something that happens every day, for sure.
No, but thanks to Heath and the supervisor project manager was Johnny Friedberg, and they worked closely together, and I think we got a quality project for the money that we spent.
Well, good. Great, great job, and I think taxpayers, we do so, we say so much when we think our tax dollars aren't being managed appropriately, but that's one, definitely one instance where we should pat those guys on the back for a job well done in terms of project management, so we appreciate it.
Last word, I don't know that anybody's here to talk about Rock the River, but maybe Parks for Acton, but we've got that event, Cusa Landing, this weekend, so I'm sure people will be in and out of the park as well, so another good use of the facility there.
Okay.
A little more icing on the cake, on the riverfront. When I got in office, there was a bond on waterfront development, and the rates got so low, we redid the bond issue. The payment stayed the same, the balance stayed the same, and we got a little over $2 million, I believe, out of that redoing, so we got free money to use on that park over there, basically, what it boiled down to. Most people don't realize that either, but thank you.
Good. So outstanding, outstanding work and some, and some good, good feedback on that particular project. So again, all the monies that we've talked about today are still going towards design, and the next phase, phase after design, of course, will be turning over the ground and construction at some level, so. All right, is there any more new business?
We've got a vote on it.
Oh, we've got a vote on that one. Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance and the resolution, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt both the ordinance and the resolution.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any more new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one. It's Resolution 309. It's a resolution authorizing agreement with Alabama power to make repairs to Delilah Street during heavy use periods through the project.
Second.
Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, this is for free repairs to be done from Delilah Street. It's off Pittman Ben Road, and by the way, it says here, Delilah Road is actually Delilah Street.
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business? Department reports, committees, boards?
I'm here to invite everybody out to Turn It Up for Turnup Tuesdays. This is our new event, starting tonight from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at Fifth Street Market. This is an addition to our local farmer's market that happens now on Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the same location. Tonight, there will be farmers with produce, arts and craft vendors, Dell's Barbecue Food Vendor, and live musical entertainment going on after visiting our Fifth Street Market. And Turnup Tuesdays this evening, remember to go visit our local downtown business, businesses, and enjoy a night out at downtown Gadsden in the historic district, and, you know, we want to also remind everybody to come out and get your play on with Parks for Acton staff during this month, July, on Saturdays and Sundays from 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. We're at various parks and locations around the city. This Saturday, we'll be at Dewa Park, and Sunday, we'll be at James Dean Martin Wildlife Park. Um, also remember Musical Mondays at the Water Wall. Uh, this is from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Enjoy, uh, listening to some smooth jazz by enjoying a free lunch with us. And then, as Shane said, we have Rock the River hosted by Cultural Arts, uh, at Couso Landing from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM on Friday evening. At 6:30, Soul Survivor with Alice Martin will be playing. At 8:00 PM, Rebirth Brass Band. General Mission is twenty-five dollars, coolers are welcome. There'll be food vendors and other vendors there. This goes to support the Hardin Center, all their programs and projects that they do. Thank y'all.
Okay, thank you, Jen. Or Jen, I'm sorry. All right, citizens' request? Mr. Cole?
Joseph Cole? President Williams to the council, to the mayor, to all who are present. So many good things have been said today, I don't want to rain on anyone's parade, but I do want to bring up a couple of matters. And one of those dealing with community policing. I have spoken to some black business owners on Tuscaloosa, also on East Broward, and I also spoke to some young millennials, also to Chief Jaggers, about community policing. And the businessmen that I have spoken to, I spoke to them about the idea that the officers who are patrolling that areas will come in and introduce themselves, and they can introduce themselves to the officers in a manner that people are knowing who are who. So if they see a police officer in the area, they would know who it is. So all the businessmen was in agreement with this. I had spoken to the chief, and he also is in agreement with that. And if this had been in place several weeks ago, there was an incident on Tuscaloosa Avenue where one of the police officers stopped one of the businessmen, and it almost turned out to be an incident. But Chief Jaggers and one of his sergeant, Terry Ferris, was able to take care of the matter, and we didn't have any issue at all along that way, along with Councilman Word. So I think it's important that the community and the police get along, because we all have to live together. And we won't, especially young folks in the community, to act appropriately with the police officers when they are stopped. And I have mentioned that to them, and I also asked Chief Jaggers to make sure that the police officers are professional when they are dealing with them. If someone is dealing with you in a professional manner, then it probably would not be an issue. Several weeks ago at a council meeting here, Councilman Echols and I had a verbal exchange. One of the council members moved to adjourn the second, second emotion, and council meeting was over. That same day at lunch, Councilor Echols and I happened to be at the same place, and I didn't know he was there. But he came to my table, and to acknowledge the character of this man, he asked me, was I okay? And was everything all right between he and I? And I told him, yes. And it let me know that we can disagree, but we do not have to be disagreeable nor disrespect. So I appreciate Mr. Echols for that. I bring that up because I had asked this council some weeks ago about forming a biracial commission to deal with racial issues. And I have spoken to some white citizens and black citizens in this city who said they want to serve. And some of those in your district, Councilman Reed, and some in your district, Councilman Echols. And I did not come to them, they came to me. So a lot of time, we don't want to identify an issue as being racial, but they are. But if we are able to talk about it and have some people who are work, who are willing to sit down and talk and to make recommendations and suggestions, I think will be a good factor. We have a legislator in this county who wants to pass a law to redo the, a school board. And it's racial because the school board now is majority black. When it was majority white, he didn't have this in mind. So these are things we shouldn't be afraid of, we need to put them on the table. And that's why I bring this up to you. Now, I'm an advocate, I am both a strong advocate for increase in the entry level rate for the police and fire department. You may not want to do it, but I'm not going to start talking about it. I'm an advocate for blacks being appointed or being hired as department heads in a city that is forty-eight percent black. It's a shame and disgrace we don't have not one black department head. And I'm not accusing anyone of racism, but I do believe it's racial. We have a, a position that's been vacant for almost four months. It hasn't even been posted. I'm not saying it's racism, I wouldn't accuse any of that, but I do believe it's racial. That's why we need these type of committees to sit down and talk. We can get together, disagree, whatever. Then we wouldn't have to worry about incidents happening in Gadsden, and then later on, you want to talk about it. Let's put it on the table now and do our best assistance to make this a good place. Because Gadsden is a good city, and all of you are good people, but we need to get together to make things right. Thank you very much for giving this opportunity, and y'all have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Ms. Tracy Pondick?
Thank you. I just wanted to tell all of you how appreciative we are. I'm the director of our SVP, which is the Retired and Senior Volunteer Program. And we do the Free Income Tax Assistance Program every year, and y'all are very gracious and let us use space for free. And I've got one of those for everybody, I think. Uh, but now our volunteers, you know, are busy all year long, and we do lots of different things, so I have a little report passing around just so you'll know what all we do all year long. Uh, but as far as taxes go, we did two thousand and eighty-eight returns, federal returns, for the citizens in Etowah and Cherokee County. Uh, but going just by zip code, a thousand and six of those were in Gadsden, or by Gadsden's zip codes. So, um, that's a lot of returns. We got back one million nine hundred seventy-one thousand eight hundred forty-five dollars in federal refunds for those clients. And since it was free, all that money went into their pockets, so they didn't have to pay anybody. But thank you again for the space at Elliott and, uh, for all of your help all year long. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, remarks by the mayor and council? Mayor? Okay.
I don't have anything.
Mr. Echols? Councilman Word?
I'd just like to thank a couple of people that, uh, was involved in a, a job fair. If you didn't know, we had over eight hundred people to come in, potential employers. Uh, we had right at a hundred employers that, uh, signed up to come, but I think it was like eighty-something that actually showed up. And eleven companies so far has hired people, and several other companies are in the process of hiring. So it was a good, uh, job fair. The governor came, the, just about the whole Etowah County delegation showed up, the mayor was there. And I'd like to thank Cochran's, Chick-fil-A, Popeyes, and the Ribbone. The Ribbone served everybody that came through the doors, so I appreciate that. And just want to thank Jen from Parks and Rec, because the Parks and Rec department went well above and beyond the call of duty, and I really appreciate it. And the employers really appreciate it. And thanks to the mayor for giving me permission to use them. Uh, so I really do, and thank the council people that showed up also. So people's jobs out there, just get qualified. If you don't like the job you're in, you can get a better job, just go get qualified. We have all type of jobs from no qualifications to four-year degrees that's available. Out of those employers that was there was over thirty-two hundred jobs available between them. There's three thousand, over three thousand two hundred jobs. So thank you again.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Billings? Councilman Cannon, Councilman Reed?
I just wanted to thank the, the guys and girls out of Public Works for the work that they've done through all the rain we had, the grass cutting, the ditches, the drains, and so forth. They've really done a fabulous job. How in the world they're ever going to catch up, I don't know, but they're working at it, and I just want to go along. And we appreciate it.
Yeah. I, I, and thank you, Councilman Reed, for bringing that up. That, that is important. There's Parks and Rec and Public Works are probably two of the business departments that we have this time of year, simply because of the, the rain and, and the, the perfect combination, if you, if you want to call it that, of rain and sunshine. So, so again, we appreciate all the hard work that they do. It gets unnoticed, you know? The only time we generally say something about it is when the grass doesn't get cut or there's flooding or things that aren't happening. So do want to really highlight it when, uh, when they're managing it and, uh, and we aren't, weren't having to deal with it. Um, there, I think Thursday of this week at, uh, from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM, there will be a community conversation, um, for, um, a community conversation that's going to be held at, uh, the Gadsden Civic Center. It's a community conversation regarding education and your community, so we want to encourage people to come out. Um, you know, I think what, what I'm hoping for is, uh, is, is civil discourse and some discussion so people can understand some of the true and real information regarding, um, regarding, regarding education and how it impacts our communities. Uh, and I, I want to highlight something. Um, I like to, you know, in, in an age where we've got a, a president that attacks the media, um, I, I want to, uh, highlight and really, uh, give a compliment to Alabama Doc, for AL dot com, Alabama dot com, AL dot com for launching a private conversation amongst educators to talk about understanding the achievement gap. Um, I, I think it's going to be a weekly report, reporting that they're going to do, but, uh, there's a private Facebook conversation that's happening between, uh, AL dot com and education, educators. And they're talking about why the gap exists. Uh, and it's not necessarily what the data is showing, but it's what people are identifying in terms of race, regardless of socioeconomic, uh, items. And it's, it's very interesting. I mean, I, and I, and I think, uh, I want to encourage people to follow that story because it's providing a lot of, uh, interesting feedback, and it's also providing a lot of educator insight. Uh, and I think that's important because as much as we talk about, um, as much as we talk about education and as much as people really feel like it's the responsibility of elected officials to talk about education, you know, there's a perspective sometimes that gets lost in all of that opinion, uh, and that emotion. And that's the perspective of those educators, people who've had to deal with our children and have had to, uh, had to watch them perform. So, so I do want to encourage people, uh, to, uh, to follow that story. And again, it's, uh, it's the, the, the story is called Understanding the Achievement Gap. Okay, Understanding the Achievement Gap. And the last thing is, uh, I do want to thank the Times. I don't, I don't know if I plan to come here and, uh, congratulate the media outlets, but they do want to thank the Times for the story that they ran on Jim, Jim Martin. Um, now, he, Jim Martin's a Republican, but, uh, but I've had the opportunity to, um, interview Jim Martin several years ago before I got into elected office. And I can tell you, that was probably one of the most rewarding interviews I've ever done. Because Jim Martin's a very knowledgeable man. You know, at that time, he was about ninety years old, uh, and, and still very sharp, uh, still could recall names and incidents specifically. And, uh, and I tell you, he is a, he is a man, along with Mr. Echols, who sit, who I sit by every week, but he is a man who really, um, who really has a storied history and, uh, and, and who's really accomplished a lot over his ninety, almost ninety-nine years. Um, so, uh, you know, and he's from right here. Uh, he, you know, not originally, of course, he eventually moved here, but, uh, but, but he, Mr. Martin's, uh, from, from right here. Uh, he's one of our own, and he, and he's got a great story to tell. So if you haven't read that story in the Gadsden Times, I want to encourage people to do so. Is there anything else? Okay, if, if there's nothing else, I entertain a motion that we adjourn.
Move to adjourn.